Good evening. It's about 7:01. I'm Richard Burke, President of the Tuolton Valley Water District, and I call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. All of the Commissioners are present, except Commissioner Bagnell at the current time, and we will begin by hearing reports by the Chief Executive Officer, and in this case it will be a designee and management staff.
Thank you, President Burke, Commissioners. Tonight's Safety Minutes, we normally do, will be presented by Andrew Watson, our Communication Public Affairs Supervisor.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me do the Safety Moment, and we're going to talk about something coming up, and that is the sun. And the sun is about to come out on a more regular basis, and one of the risks of being in the sun is skin cancer. And this is a prevalent situation in the United States. One in five Americans will develop some form of skin cancer in the course of their lifetimes. Nearly 50 percent of Americans who live to the age of 65 will have skin cancer at least once. One American dies of melanoma every hour, and having more than five sunburns doubles your risk of melanoma, and a use of a tanning bed before the age of 35 increases your risk by 75 percent. So some of the ways that you can prevent this is to limit your contact with ultraviolet light, and this could be through direct sunlight or through tanning beds. If you find that you have to be in the sun to avoid midday sun, cover up with large-brim hats or UV-protective clothing and sunglasses. Stay in the shade whenever possible, and wear sunscreen with an SPF of 30 or higher. And with that, they do recommend that you reapply it regularly, and also be cognizant of getting into waters with wildlife, because it can poison some of the coral and that. So being mindful of when you use it, and to remember to use it when you get out of the water. There's also clothing, tents, and umbrellas with SPF ratings now, and so they're not all the same, so making sure you have one that does really actually screen out the UV rays. And then, on a more proactive prevention method, for those of us who maybe didn't avoid the five sunburns, or the tanning beds before we were 35, to check your own skin regularly. It's recommended that you do this once a month. SkinCancer.org has some great tools on there that give you step-by-step instructions, but also measuring guides, so that you can record any marks on your skin now, and you can really be sure if they're growing or not, if you measure them. And then, once a year, it's recommended that you get a physician's exam, and/or you also contact your physician if you notice anything abnormal or any changes in the color, shape, size, or appearance of any growths. That's your Safety Moment.
Thank you, Andrew. Andrea, sorry. For the rest of tonight's CEO report, obviously, I'm here on behalf of Mark. I want to point out that we've received news that Gary Pippen passed away over the weekend. Mr. Pippen was TBWD's Engineering Manager for 30 years, and retired from the district in 2007. His service was held earlier today. A quick update on our CEO. I'm obviously sitting in for Mark Knutson tonight. He continues to recover from his recent surgery on his shoulder. I'm happy to report that Mr. Knutson's recovery is progressing well. In fact, we received an email from him on Monday where he reported that his doctors will allow him to return to work for a limited number of hours per day next week. So as Mark continues his recovery, we'll continue to rotate management duties on his behalf. I'll continue to act in his capacity as CEO for the remainder of this week, and Amy Heinlein, the Director of Human Resources, will assume those duties on Monday. Update on our water supply situation. So as we approach the summer watering season, water demands typically increase as our citizens increase their water use to maintain landscaping and support summertime activities. The district closely monitors the availability of its water resources to meet these peak season demands, and I'm happy to report that the district's water supplies are in excellent shape again this year. The Barney Reservoir, which supplies the district's water to the GWC, or Joint Water Commission, is almost completely full. In addition, our GWC partners store water in Hag Lake, which is expected to fill later this spring. In addition to providing water to the GWC and other water uses, Hag Lake also provides a flood control function, which requires delaying filling that till later in the year, so it can be used to reduce flood hazards in the Tuolton Basin due to late summer, or late spring storms. The City of Portland reports that its Bull Run facilities are full and have adequate supplies to meet the district's needs, including the district's purchase of additional summer interruptible water. And finally, the district's aquifer storage from recovery wells at Grabhorn is fully recharged and ready for service. Although the availability of water resource is excellent, we continue to urge customers to use water wisely. However, the district expects to have more than enough supplies to meet the customers' needs this summer. Finally, in keeping with the district's mission to provide our community with quality water and customer service, Andrew Callstrom, the Manager of Customer Service Department, will introduce the department report this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, President Burke, Board of Commissioners. You may recall that last year, the Communications and Public Affairs Program joined the Customer Service Department. That's why I'm giving the introduction tonight. One of the priority projects on our list is to redesign the district's website in order to better serve customers and provide information that's useful for them. But here tonight to give you an overview of this effort is, again, our very talented Communications and Public Affairs Supervisor, Andrea Watson.
Thank you, and again, thanks, Commissioners, and President Burke. This project has been progressing. It's one of the first things I started working on when I arrived in November. The takeaways of the goals of this project are that we're going to have a website that will better provide information to customers. Our vision for this is it'll be in more byte-sized bytes, instead of long, text-heavy, a lot more pictures and graphics. And this is part of, this project is outlined in the district initiatives, and it's also funded through the 2017-19 biennial budget. And the Customer Service Department is leading the project. We will be having stakeholders and a committee that will help us with the decision-making and the rating of the vendors. And we're also going to have an element where we have on our existing website, a place for customers that are visiting that, to leave ideas and suggestions for things they'd like to see in the new website. The staff here will keep the board informed as the project progresses. And the, again, some of the goals modernize, expand the TBWD Virtual Service Center. This is sort of our digital front door, and we want to make this a more pleasing experience. And we want to better serve our customers, as well as our internal service to the district's departments. We want the website to reflect and represent our mission, our vision, and our values, and we want to better communicate the value of water and that service to the TBWD community. We also want to expand the capacity of the district to create microsites for partnerships, and we've already visited with the Willamette River Water Coalition, and they've agreed to purchase website services from us. When we cut over to this new website, we'll be providing those services for them. We also have agreed to provide web services for the Willamette intake facilities, and their meetings are starting here soon, and so we have a temporary page on our site now. We also want to take this as an opportunity to better document the connection between other software products, where there's an interface with the website, and this is part of the IT department schools. There's also new requirements for any sites that are built after, I believe it was February of 2018, that they, all government agencies need to take steps to better meet the ADA requirements. So we'll be looking through that lens when we choose the design and the content for the site. We also really wanted to respond to feedback from the district's brand visioning session, and I'll be back on May 1st to talk more about how we want to move through that work, and get some guidance from you on how to move forward through that. That's really important, and it's tied to the web project, because the shape of our logo is somewhat constricting, and so we need to address at least that part of it before we do the web design, or we're going to be pretty limited in what they can do for us. And then also, as part of my onboarding process, I met with each member of the management team to get feedback, and so we want to incorporate the goals from that process into this project. So where we're at in the next steps is, we've been through IMOC, and we've been to the management team, and we're working through the final approval of the charter, and to secure the staff resources to work on the selection process. We will finish up the requirements and put the RFP out, and part of that, we'll have the committee working on the evaluation criteria before we publish that. Then we will do a vendor selection process, negotiate a contract, and then schedule the work, which is still on track, we believe, to be done by the end of this calendar year. The project's in the budget. It has a line item of $60,000, and I'm, you know, welcome to take any questions, if anybody has any.
The question I'm asked most often now is, when are they going to tear up Kinneaman, or when are they going to tear up Farmington, or some other road? Is there anywhere on the website that gives an approximate date of when construction's going to start?
You want to take that, Dave, since it would be on the WWSP site?
Yeah, thanks, Andrea. So, yeah, on the WWSP site, we have a regularly updated description of the program and all of its activities, including a Gantt chart or a bar chart that shows the schedule, proposed schedule of construction.
Yeah.
And also, obviously, a lot of those notes, because many of these projects are happening a year or years from now, that acknowledgement that some of those dates may change.
Sure.
Yeah.
I understand that part.
But that information is regularly updated on the Willamette Water Supply Program website, which is OurReliableWater.org.
I'm not sure a lot of the public knows about that website.
Okay. We need to do some more advertising of it.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
You know, that makes sense. That obviously is our biggest project. You know, maybe, I mean, I don't want to micromanage anything, but a suggestion, maybe a button that says, you know, "impact of the construction on you," or something. And...
We definitely want that information to be more navigatable than it is now. Like, right now, it's just a whole bunch of things at the top, and it's all very text-oriented. So, you know, we would expect, in a modern website, and the ones we've held up, is sort of ones that we like internally, that there'd be icons, you know, so you maybe have the road construction, and then, obviously, there would be, with a new platform, more opportunities to actually cross-connect, so that when you're talking about anything about the Willamette, you can easily flip over to their site and back and forth. And right now, that's, those interfaces are pretty clunky. So, any suggestions like that, you know, we would, we want to hear them from everybody, the community, board, staff, anybody who has ideas, because those things, we need to tell the designers before they start that process.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that concludes the CEO and Management Staff Report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, our reports of meetings attended and topics to be raised by Commissioners. I guess I'll start with the illustrious Commissioner Schmidt. Circle around.
Okay. I have four to report. On the 2nd of this month, I attended the Tuolton Valley Water District/West Slope Water District meeting, just to keep us abreast of what each one is doing. They gave a really nice presentation on their unit. On the 12th, I attended the Alola Business Association, which was basically updates on community business relations. And on the 13th, I attended the Joint Water Commission, which discussed the water treatment plant expansion and budget changes, and tonight's board meeting.
Commissioner Doan, also the illustrious one.
Well, let's not get carried away. In addition to the ones, well, I attended the West Slope Meeting on the 2nd. We had a workshop here on the 3rd. I attended a meeting with various local entities concerning a petroleum pipeline that crosses the Willamette River that could cause us concern should it break. And so, this is the second of those meetings, and it's likely to be a third, or maybe a fourth. Anyway, some progress is being made, although it's moving a lot slower than I think everybody would like to have it move. Attended the Joint Water Commission, Barney Joint Operating Commission meeting last Friday, and then today's meeting.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Dugan.
I had the April 2nd meeting with the West Slope Water District, the joint meeting we had here, to report. On the 3rd of April, I also attended the work session that we had, where we covered updates for customer information and other programs. On the 11th of April, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Executive Committee, where we received program updates. There are a couple of communities that are considering joining the consortium, and will have final outcomes as they go through their mandated budget processes. On May 8th, the City of Troutdale will consider it formally, and hopefully will join, once again, the consortium. But it is pretty rough on those smaller communities, where for us, we kind of take it as a given. For them, they have to consider whether they can do their mandated programs in-house more efficiently, or whether joining the consortium, which we know is a lot more efficient to do jointly, as opposed to running your own program. But for them, they look at the dollar figure and think, oh, we can probably do it cheaper. But they don't realize the benefits typically of being a member of the consortium for all the other resources that are available in doing things regionally. On March 13th, 1,400 4th graders throughout the metro region attended the Clean Water Festival, held at the University of Portland. It's an annual event, and the consortium was a major sponsor for educating the next generation of future water users and water rate payers. And they got a full education on all the elements that are necessary to collect the water and get it to their homes, and save for use on the tap. We also were notified that Orr Warren is having their annual convention or conference in September. That's the Oregon Cooperative Agencies that plan for resource sharing in small emergencies and for large emergencies. And that will be held at Skamania Lodge, September 17th through 19th, and any members, of which we are, and all of our near neighbors are members of Orr Warren, they're encouraged to attend. We also went through the final drafts of the Consortium Strategic Plan Update, which represent a refocusing and an updating of the future plans for what staff needs to focus on for the next five years. And we also went over our draft agenda for the regular meeting that will be held this coming June. That's it for the Consortium Executive Committee update, and that's all I have to report for this month.
Okay, very good. I have four meetings to report myself. Tonight's board meeting, the workshop previously discussed, the meeting with the West Slope Water District previously discussed, and the unique meeting I had was with Clark Balfour on the 10th, where we set the board meeting agenda for tonight. So those are the meetings. Are there any Commissioner issues to be brought up tonight? Okay, seeing none, we would normally go to public comment, but there's no public comment tonight, which will lead us to our consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda. The minutes of March 14th, 2018, joint work session; the March 21st, 2018, regular session minutes; the April 2nd, 2018, joint work session minutes; and the April 3rd, 2018, work session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Schmidt, and second by Commissioner Doan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. They are approved. That will take us to our business agenda, where we will first consider adopting Resolution Number 1418, a resolution accepting conveyance of property on Northwest Thompson Road from Montloma County to the Tuolton Valley Water District.
Tonight's staff report will be presented by Kerry Pack, our Chief Engineer.
Good evening, President Burke and Commissioners. This is a relatively simple or quick resolution. We had an opportunity to acquire the subject property up there. It's outlined with the red rectangular. The yellow happens to be our Bonnie Slope reservoir site that we abandoned quite a while ago, a few years ago. Our intent is to sell this property as a buildable lot, and acquiring that small 2,600 square foot lot would make selling this property a little bit more easy. It happened to, it was acquired, conveyed to us from Montloma County from a property tax, delinquent property tax issue. So I think the minimum bid was $3,000, which is what we paid for. So we're asking you to consider adopting this resolution to acquire this property. That's the end of my staff report, unless you have any questions.
Short and sweet. Any questions for our Chief Engineer? Okay, I'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 1418.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Doan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Pass 4-0. Let's see. The next item, consider Resolution Number 1518, a resolution granting and accepting the intake facility's easement between the Tuolton Valley Water District and the cities of Wilsonville, Sherwood, Hillsborough, Taggert, and Beaverton.
And tonight's staff report will be presented by Clark Balfour, our General Counsel.
Thank you, Jim. Sorry. You may have seen this property before.
Uh-huh.
And that's because you own it, and you own it with the City of Wilsonville, and that's where our Willamette Water Treatment Plant Site is. And now, the soon-to-be expanded intake facility, and the blue line that you see coming out on the bottom of that photo is our anticipated pipeline routing. So, over the last few months, we've approved the WIF Commission Agreement and various documents that go with it. And two of those documents are the intake facility easement, which would be for the intake site up there in yellow. But then, we also need an easement for the pipeline and other facilities coming out of there. And so, we have two resolutions, because we're treating them differently, because we have different parties. So the first one is Resolution 15-18, and that has to do with the intake facilities. So in the WIF Commission Agreement, there was a requirement that the owners of the property, Tuolton Valley and City of Wilsonville, grant to the WIF Commission and all of its underlying members, an easement to occupy the expanded intake facility site. So what Resolution 15-18 does is to have you approve the intake facility's easement, which had been an exhibit to the WIF Commission Agreement you approved, but now to approve this intake facility easement as a prelude to recording. And it's curious, because Tuolton Valley is not only an owner of the property, so you're a grantor of the easement, but because you're a member of the WIF Commission, you're also accepting the rights and obligations as a grantee. So, we actually have you wearing two hats in this same easement document, but it does require you to adopt this resolution and to both accept and grant the real property interests involved.
So we're giving an easement to ourselves?
Yes. That's boiled down, yes. So, if there, I can answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Unless there's further debate, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1518.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Dugan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Doan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Resolution is adopted 4-0. Next one is, consider adopting Resolution Number 1618, a resolution granting and accepting the pipeline easement between the Tuolton Valley Water District and the cities of Wilsonville and Hillsborough for the Willamette Water Supply System. This is Part II, no doubt.
Very astute. This is Part II. This is for the blue pipeline now that exits the intake. And the only difference here is, is that Tuolton Valley and Wilsonville, once again, will grant an easement interest, but this time, it's a smaller subset of players, because not all folks in the WIF will be part of the Willamette Water Supply System. So, we haven't formed our Willamette Water Supply entity yet. You know, the City of Beaverton hasn't joined, so at this moment in time, the two grantees would be Tuolton Valley Water and the City of Hillsborough. There's language in this easement that allows for that subsequent assignment by us, without consent, to that entity that we will form for the water treatment plant, the raw water pipeline, the finished water pipeline, the reservoirs, what we've referred to as the WWSS in our shorthand conversations. So, we would ask you, once again, to adopt Resolution 16-18, and both grant and accept the rights and obligations of the easement.
Any questions? Pretty clear. Commissioner Doan?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 16-18.
It's been moved that we adopt Resolution Number 16-18. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Resolution 16-18 is adopted. And so now, we will go to considering adopting Resolution Number 17-18, a resolution adopting amended policies of the Board of Commissioners.
And tonight's staff report will be presented by our General Counsel, Clark Balfour.
President Burke and Commissioners, it's been a long time since I've seen you.
Who are you again?
So, if you recall, by way of history, for those who may be watching, about a year ago, the Board adopted new policies to replace policies that had been in place some time ago. And one of the provisions that we put in the new policies is that, on an annual basis, we would do a review. The Board conducted that review at the March 6th work session, and from that conversation, staff prepared the attached policies, or amendments to those policies, which are shown in track changes form for your convenience. So, these are presented to you tonight. We'd ask that you adopt these amendments that you had asked us to make. It would be by adopting Resolution 17-18. Upon adoption, then, we would have the CEO or staff then take these track changes, publish them in the board policies, and then they would be in final form.
Any questions?
I just wanted to make a comment about our executive session. When you were late, stuck in traffic, the question came up of who would convene the executive session. And I wasn't completely sure what the existing language was, but now that I have it here before me, I think Commissioner Schmidt was a usurper of my authority to be the convener of that executive committee meeting, and I think we need to watch that very closely in the future, so that we don't have such breaks in proper authority and... But no, I, all kidding aside, I really appreciate staff's effort to sift through the various issues that were brought up by the Commissioners in our previous discussions at the workshop. And I think the language that's here before us really satisfies the need and makes it very clear what the expectations are. So, thank you very much. I love the simplicity of it, and I think it will get us to where we need to be. So, thank you, staff, for all the work that went into crafting a very easy-to-understand, hopefully, very easy-to-administer policy document.
Thank you.
Very good. And we won't have any Al Haag moments.
Well, exactly. You do resemble Al Haag a little bit. You're controlling in our executive conference room, so...
Well, you know, one of the things that's great about being a member of this Board of Commissioners is that all five Commissioners are... of Commissioners is that all five Commissioners are all capable of skillfully running meetings. We're really fortunate to have a body of skilled Commissioners as well as a very skilled staff. And I echo what Commissioner Dugan said. I think that one of the purposes of a policy manual for Board of Commissioners is to set standards, and on an ongoing basis, we, you know, try to live up to them and try to check each other to live up to them. And I think that they have done -- the Board and staff together have done a really good job in simplifying, clarifying, and articulating a very good set of policies. So thanks to all. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1718.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Resolution 1718 is adopted. And there being no further business before the Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.